Board of Commissioners, Proclamation and Resolution portion of our commission meeting tonight. And I guess we will start out first with a proclamation for the K-25 Uranium Isotope for Nuclear Fuel Day, and that will be a proclamation by Mayor Frank.
And this was requested by Commissioner Wondell.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I just want to let the mayor read this. She's got a lot more work in this area than I have, and I appreciate her reading it. Thank you.
Whereas, "May 7, 2025 is the dedication of the scientific achievements of K-25, separating uranium isotopes for nuclear fuel in Oak Ridge, Tennessee, as a national historic chemical landmark by the National American Chemical Society. And whereas this American Chemical Society, national historic chemical landmark honors one of the most significant scientific achievements, providing much of the uranium fuel used for defense and for nuclear energy-powered electrical production worldwide. And whereas, the K-25 chemists and chemical engineers in collaboration with United States industries and universities transformed our lives by solving the difficult scientific obstacle of enriching uranium with a chemical separations process known as gaseous diffusion." And whereas, "The multidisciplinary scientific effort at K-25 provided breakthrough advances in membranes and corrosion resistance. And whereas, this overwhelming project housed under 144-acre roof, hundreds of miles of vacuum-tight nickel or nickel-plated piping, 4 million miles of copper tubing, 6,000 compressors, and 60,000 railroad cars to transport material. And whereas, the legacy of K-25's technological and scientific achievements resulted in access to enriched uranium with over 90% purity, allowing the United States to power the world's first nuclear submarine in 1954. And whereas, the fuel now provided by Y-12 National Security Complex in Oak Ridge continues to power the United States Navy's nuclear ships to this day. And whereas, the achievement of low-enrichment process developed at K-25 was ideal to fuel nuclear power plants, allowing countries to expand their sources of energy provided to millions of homes and businesses. And whereas, the centrifuge technology developed at K-25 was applied in medicine to obtain ultra-pure vaccines such as the early batches of the polio vaccine by virologist Jonas Salk and the pharmaceutical company Eli Lilly to purify large batches of influenza vaccine." Now therefore, Anderson County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 7, 2025, the K-25 Uranium Isotopes for Nuclear Fuel Day.
Thank you, Mayor, and we'll just keep you up here.
Yes.
So, we have a resolution that was requested by Commissioner McCamey, and the resolution is recognizing the Holiday Bureau and the volunteer, Mr. Ronald Langley.
You want to come on up here, Ron? So we can honor you?[326.02][326.02](LAUGHING).
All right. A resolution recognizing the Holiday Bureau of Anderson County and volunteer Mr. Ronald Langley for their dedicated service to bring holiday cheer to needy families. Whereas, the Holiday Bureau has served Anderson County for 80 years, originating in 1944 when two GIs who had returned home from World War II found that there was a need for toys for children, and they began collecting, repairing, and distributing toys to less fortunate families. And whereas, the American Legion Chapter 100 got involved, and Charles Jackson served as the Holiday Bureau's director, serving in that role until 1958 when Jerry Goldberg was named director. Mr. Goldberg led efforts to incorporate the organization, allowing it to receive funds from a broader base than just residents of the surrounding area. The charter was approved on November 26, 1971. Other directors have included Nat Johnson, Loretta Crane, Howard Kirkland, and Don Kelshimer. And whereas, the Holiday Bureau of Anderson County, which originally operated from several different locations, has been based since 1990 in a metal 4,800-square-foot building behind what was once the Daniel Arthur Rehabilitation Center off Emery Valley Road in Oak Ridge. And whereas, from that location, volunteers accept, organize, clean, and repair a variety of donated gifts and toys, from computers and puzzles and games to dolls and bicycles, household goods and clothing that are given to children and families in need in time for the holiday season. And whereas, in October of each year, the Holiday Bureau of Anderson County conducts sign-ups for food baskets and vouchers, as well as toys, clothes, and household items. It is estimated that 25 to 30 families were helped when the organization first started. Today, it is believed more than 1,000 families and 800 children are served annually by the Holiday Bureau. And whereas, longtime Holiday Bureau volunteer Ronald Langley, who has served the organization off and on since 1968, and is both an officer and a board member since 2003, including as the current president, is just one of the numerous volunteers who have dedicated many years and countless hours to collecting, repairing, and distributing various toys, bicycles, and other items that bring smiles to many children and their families. Now therefore, be it resolved, meeting in regular session on Monday, March 17, 2025, that we, the Anderson County Board of Commissioners and County Mayor Terry Frank, do hereby recognize the volunteers of the Holiday Bureau of Anderson County for their years of dedicated service to the community and families of Anderson County. In doing so, we also honor volunteer Mr. Ronald Langley for his passion and his longtime commitment to the Holiday Bureau and its efforts to bring holiday cheer to countless families each year.[526.82][526.82](APPLAUSE).
Yeah, I'd like to thank you all. We used to be able to do a lot more. We used to have more volunteers than what we do. We had 38 volunteers eight years ago, and now we're down to about 11 volunteers. But we have trouble getting volunteers. Today is a hard time to get volunteers. And we will welcome anybody that would like to volunteer. I've got one chap here out here. He volunteered the last year, and we use more volunteers. Work on bicycles, work on toys, work on dolls, whatever. Just find something you like to do and whip it to the work.[598.16][598.16](LAUGHING). Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.[602.16][602.16](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Langley. We appreciate all you do for Anderson County. Next, we are going to have a resolution requested by Commissioner Wondell, a resolution honoring volunteer firefighters.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to read this resolution. This is something that the state of Tennessee does every year, and I'm happy that we're going to recognize our volunteer firefighters as well. Resolution number 25-03-1207. A resolution honoring the volunteer firefighters of Anderson County. Whereas, throughout our history, the American spirit has been distinguished by the ready willingness of neighbors to join together to help one another. The tradition of voluntary community service is as important today as it was in the founding years of our country. And whereas, our volunteer firefighters in Anderson County, Tennessee, carry on this truly American tradition of citizen response for the common good. Volunteer firefighters protect our lives, our families, and the economic life of our communities from the threat of destructive fire, often a great personal sacrifice. And whereas, volunteer firefighters are a crucial part of the fire service, making up a large portion of firefighters in the state. And whereas, our volunteer firefighters are the embodiment of the volunteer state spirit as they willingly put their lives at risk for their communities, all for little or no compensation or recognition, to protect their neighbors. These volunteers are more than firefighters because they respond to a wide range of natural and technological emergencies, often at great personal sacrifice. And whereas, these trained and organized volunteers are neighbors, are valuable resources for our community. It is a fitting and proper honor to dedicate dedication and bravery of our volunteer firefighters who are essential to public service. And whereas, the week of March 2nd through the 8th, 2025, is a time to recognize and appreciate the selfless service of our volunteer firefighters. Now therefore, the Anderson Board of Commissioners call upon all citizens of Anderson County to join us in expressing the appreciation of a grateful community for the exemplary services provided by the dedicated members of our volunteer fire departments, not just during Volunteer Firefighters Week, but every day of the year. Resolved, approved, and effective this 17th day, March 2025.[790.87][790.87](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Commissioner Wondell. And we're going to go to Commissioner Wondell again. He has also requested a resolution endorsing Adopt a Pet Month.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. Mayor, again. Resolution number 25-03-1208. Resolution encouraging the adoption of shelter pets during the month of March. Whereas, adopting a pet in need of a home gives a pet a second chance, can bring joy to the home, positively impacts the community, and alleviates the strain on overcrowded shelters. And whereas, the week of March 24th through 30th, 2025, is recognized by PetSmart Charities and other charitable organizations as National Adopt a Pet Week. And whereas, the animal shelters in Anderson County have many pets available for adoption, but only about 50% of shelter-available pets end up adopted. And whereas, adoption of shelter pets should be encouraged in order to increase the percent and numbers of pets adopted. And whereas, the Anderson County Board of Commissioners endorses the adoption of shelter pets throughout the month of March as one means to achieve this goal. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Anderson County Board of Commissioners, encourage and endorse the adoption of pets from the animal shelters in Anderson County during the month of March 2025. Resolved, approved, and effective this 17th day, March 2025.[900.01][900.01](APPLAUSE).
That is the end of the proclamation and resolution portion of the meeting. We'll stand adjourned until 6:30.
All right, good evening, everyone.
You're praying, thank you.
All right, let everybody get situated here. Annette, are we good? Are you good? All right, thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 6:30 portion of Anderson County Board of Commissioners meeting. We will start out with a roll call. Looks like all are present. We will now move into our prayer led by Commissioner Palmer, and then we will follow with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Foster. Please stand.
If you would like to pray with me, please. This is the day that the Lord hath made, and I will rejoice and be glad in it. Thank you so much for another day of life and for another opportunity to serve you and to serve your people. Father, I ask that you would be with us today as we make weighty decisions, that you would give us your mind, your heart, your words, calm our spirit, help us to do what is right in your sight, help us to be kind and to be just with each other. And Father, I just pray that you would protect this room from the enemy, that you would help us to do the things that we need to do in a way that is pleasing. So, Father, be with us now, and we will give you glory in all things. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Okay, then, salute, play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. All right, we will move into our appearance of citizens. Looks like we have a pretty familiar crowd, but I wanted to just go over it again. Appearance of citizens is when you can come and address the county commission for items that are on or not on the agenda. You will have three minutes to address this commission. Commissioner Foster will give you a 30-second left notification, and then we do a hard cutoff at three minutes. We ask that you provide your name, your address, and that there are no attacks on any individuals or anybody that serves on the body, and comments are directed to the chair. At this point, I will go ahead and turn it over to the audience. Yes, ma'am, please come to the podium. State your name and address, please.
I'm Nicole Farrar. I'm in District 6, 154 North Seneca Road in Oak Ridge. I sent an email yesterday to all of you. I just wanted, in case you guys didn't get it, I know one of them bounced back. I talked to my representative here, and he's going to let that person know. But it basically laid out the way, the structure that our different shelters, regional shelters, work. There is one particular shelter that we actually were at this weekend. That is the Blunt County Animal Center. They run in the exact same way that Anderson does as far as structure, who reports to who. And I'm just here to let you guys know that all of them welcome your phone call. They welcome, if any of you want to take a tour, and both their 501(c)(3) and their staff has said if you want to call their mayor, he is a giant supporter, very proud of their shelter, he would welcome your phone call anytime to talk about the shelter. So, that's all I had to say, just, you know, check your email, all the information's there.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Is there anyone else who... Yes, sir. I see you're... I assume you're wanting to chat, right? You are wanting to address? Okay, thank you.
My name is John Jordan. My address is 611 South Charles G. Severs Boulevard. I want to talk about the animal shelter. Full disclosure, several years ago, I was invited by Mayor Frank to participate at a group to address the lack of an animal shelter. I like and respect Mayor Frank, but I was not able to participate due to travel commitments for work, so I wanted to say that right off the bat. I avoid political discussions as much as possible and have no social media accounts whatsoever to avoid political conversations and arguments. I appreciate every one of you who steps up to serve our community. You're much better people than I am. A couple of months ago, I visited the Anderson County Animal Shelter and was shocked to see how awful the facilities were. I realize it's not in an ideal location, but there's no excuse for the neglect that has led to such appalling conditions for the animals there. The volunteers there that day were doing the best they could while the director essentially ignored me and everyone else who came in and didn't really seem to care much about anything. I had heard there was an advisory board in the works, so I shut my mouth and kept my thoughts to myself. I didn't grow up here. I choose to live here because my incredible wife, Robin, is from here, and there are so many great things about this place: lakes and mountains, great schools. My son was educated from kindergarten through high school in our school system and went on to be a four-year athlete in college and will have his MBA at age 23. Our school system was his foundation. We have top-notch law enforcement and fire protection, EMS. We have tremendous recreational opportunities, and most of all, we have great people here. But the Anderson County Animal Shelter is an embarrassment to our community. There is no excuse for Commissioners to allow these conditions to continue to exist. After the advisory board was voted down, I attended the Operations Committee meeting last week to learn more about the situation. During the meeting, Commissioner Wondell provided historical context regarding the animal shelter and provided the minutes of previous workshops and committees of the last 40 years. Another Commissioner asked if the Commissioners should get together and go out to the shelter, but got no real response. Another Commissioner seemed to blame the volunteers as if they're the source of problems. Then a petty argument erupted, and nothing of any substance came after that. Humane treatment of animals is not a partisan issue. I don't think it's a political issue at all. It's just about doing the right thing. So, I urge the Commissioners...
30 seconds.
...to read the insights and suggestions from previous workshops, which Commissioner Wondell has provided. Come to the next workshop, if there is one, prepared with solutions in mind instead of starting all over again like it's the first time we've heard of this issue. And yes, Commissioners, go visit the animal shelter. I hope it's cleaner now than it was when I was there. Have real conversations with the volunteers who are here tonight, and please set aside whatever personal animosity there is between you all and do what's best for this community, animals and people. I am willing to volunteer if I can be of any help.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. All right. Is there anyone else? Mr. Mullins. I'm going to take a wild stab and say you're not talking about the shelter, because I was going to limit that.
My name is Nathan Mullins, and I'm from Oak Ridge. I'm wearing my Mister Rogers sweater and shoes to inspire me to reach out for consensus amongst our neighbors in the Democrat Party. I want to talk to you about a few two-hour-long discussions I've had with a dozen individuals or couples representing the gay community over the age-appropriate book issue. Just as I've represented the Christian Moral Majority viewpoint in this community, the gay folks want their representational books to not be removed from the adult section of the library. However, everyone was adamant that those books were not appropriate for youth in any case. I would always try to persuade these folks to take advantage of their local opportunities to express their viewpoint on age-appropriate access. Unfortunately, not one of these folks had the public bravery to break from leftist doctrine that six-year-olds and up need grooming books. Even though most people are ideologically in the middle, the majority of independent voters tend to agree on what is normal. Justifiably, Democrat radical leadership has lost ground, and their party has suffered a definite malaise across the nation. This shows a lack of support for their identity politics platform that prioritizes grievance for the purpose of Marxist agitation and propaganda. Again, I would like to say that as the Moral Majority closes in on targeting the legal solutions to solving these issues in nearby counties across Tennessee, I have been articulate and reasonable in my consistent requests that you throw off your leftist philosophical captors. Join your lawful Orthodox religious neighbors in acknowledging the proper rule of law as is currently on our law books, under obscenity law concerning minors. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins. All right. I didn't see any other hands, so I'm going to go ahead and move forward. We will now go to approval and correction of agendas. We'll start with the consent agenda. Is there... Commissioner Palmer.
I'd like to pull the Library Board minutes off of the consent and place them under Committees Number 5. Library.
All right. Consent agenda. We have a motion to prove the consent agenda with removing the Library Board minutes to the regular agenda. All the other items, I'm assuming you guys are okay with? All right, we have a motion and second on the consent agenda. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we will move to the regular agenda. Commissioners, I sent an email out. I hope it wasn't too confusing, because as I was writing it, I read it about 14 times, because I may have confused myself. But just to be clear, ideally, this is when we would add new business to the agenda. Again, if conversation sparks down there as we go along tonight, then there's obviously mechanisms to add things to the agenda. But if there are any thing that's not on this agenda that we need to take up or change, move around, we've got Library Board at 5. Is there anything? We have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted with the addition of the Library Board minutes. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, doke. Moving into elections, nominating report. Chairwoman Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Nominating Committee met on March 10, 2025, and we had a motion by Commissioner Beauchamp to appoint Mr. Jimmy McBride to serve on the Civil Service Board, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. The motion was passed and forwarded to full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Yeager, to approve the nominating committee appointment. Is there any questions or any other... All right, seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's it for the Nominating Committee.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, moving on, County Mayor. Mayor Frank.
Well, do we need to approve the resolution for Holiday Bureau?
Yeah, we do not have that in here.
I didn't know if it... Because I did do it as a resolution.
Yeah, we have three resolutions tonight. Is there a motion to... To add these to Section... I'll just say 6B to this agenda? The motion and a second, and these are the three resolutions from the 6 o'clock portion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we've got a resolution for Mr. Langley, resolutions for the Fire Department, Volunteer Fire Department, and the Adopted Shelter Pet Month. Do I have a motion and a second for approval? We've got a motion. Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Capshaw. Any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mayor, for pointing that out.
Absolutely. The next item is approval of the T-DART Railroad Agreement described as miscellaneous safety improvements of various local roads in Anderson County at milepost 244.76. This will be contingent upon Law Director and Highway Superintendent approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. So, it goes to them after us?
Yes, yes.
All right, any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then the next item is in the full minutes. There was a motion for Commissioner Smallridge asking for some reporting and greater citizen involvement, and so I did put in there a memo just for some suggestions, and am, of course, open to more suggestions, but I put that in as a starting place.
Do you have any action on this, correct?
No, sir, unless you all want to take it up as a discussion point or add anything else as far as reporting.
Unless there's no action on it, I don't...
Okay.
Anybody? All right.
That's all I have.
Thank you, madam. All right, Mr. Alley. We have seen you a lot. We're going to miss when all this gets done.
Thank you, ladies and members of the commission, for having me. Okay. I'm here to have the memo of understanding from the State Board of Equalization and the resolution for a four-year reappraisal and the four-year reappraisal plan, some of which have already been approved, but I need all of that approved, if I could, please.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner McCamey. Is that for both, sir?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Commissioner Beauchamp. Are there any questions or discussion for Mr. Alley? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
When the other was the... Would they do the equal use separately?
That'll be in Robbie's... You're talking about the contract? Yeah, I think that'll be in Robbie's report. All right, speaking of, Mr. Hobro.
Okay, cash and fund balance report. Ending February 28, 2025. The general fund, committed funds, $518,537, restricted $2.2 million. Assigned funds, $4.1 million. An assigned fund balance is at $10.7 million. Total fund balance, $17,682,808. Cash, $25,334,959, which is up $1.6 million from last year at this time. Schools, fund balance, $10.7 million. Cash, $22.6 million. Any questions on the fund balance report? February is always the highest cash balances. All right, sales tax, county portion as a whole, $5,40324, down 5.5% from last year at this time. Anderson County... Anderson County portion is 602,686, which is like 5,000 more than last year in January. So, sales tax still leveling off, but we're still doing the same or a little better than last year. ARPA funding eligibility categories, or the ARPA projects fund. Interest remaining, there's 198,020.43, and the projects at the bottom are still in progress. Any questions there?
Robbie, what is the amount that's in the bank that's getting interest?
It is, it's also in that cash and funds, 2.9 million.
Okay.
Okay, and then the grant inventory list, or the Homeland Security Grant is the newest one on the bottom for the EOC. Any questions on any of those reports? Okay. Purchasing contracts and surplus vehicles. All have had a legal review. There are six contracts, 3A through 3E and 4A, which is the Eagleview contract.
All right. We've got a motion by Commissioner Beauchamp, seconded by Commissioner Capshaw. Is this as a group?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? All right. Seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. 16 yes, zero no, motion passes.
Okay. And then one capital asset donation, the EMA hazmat truck, which we did approve last month, but it didn't go to purchasing for surplus first, so the reason it was on that report, just it'd be okay to approve that again.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion on this motion, please? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Group three transfers, the no commission action is necessary for those. Group four appropriations from the school department, there are three of those, two from physical services, and one special ed.
All right. I'm just going to assume that we're taking these as a group unless you say otherwise. All right. Motion by Commissioner Smallridge and seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion on this motion? All right. Seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Group six appropriations, non-school, there are six of those, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Allen. We have a second. We have a second by Commissioner Vow. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right. Seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Motion carries.
A one appropriation from the non-sold fund balance for the election commission, $11,704.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right. Seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Motion carries.
Okay. And Commissioner Mays recited TCA Code 212, 210, and requested that be reflected in the minutes. Do you want me to read that statute as well?
You can.
Okay, sure. Nothing in Acts 1986, Chapter 930, shall be construed as conferring upon any county election commission administrative elections as any other county election official status as a state employee. All such persons shall be subject to all applicable, applicable, app, I can never say that word, purchasing and budgetary laws of such county.
So Commissioner, I'm not going to debate it, but just really quick, when we did the vote of no confidence, there was, they had a motion for me to send correspondence to the state after speaking with Mark Goins, who is one of the election, local election coordinators for this side. That is the statute that he provided me stating that all election administrators are required to operate under the budget and purchasing guidelines adopted by said county. So for this instance, it would be the 81 Act, so everything that our department heads and elected officials have to follow under the 81 Act, so does Mr. Stevens. And so I just read that aloud at budget and asked for it to be in the minutes. Mr. Stevens was here, which, since that was a point of contention where he didn't think he had to, and it was just a question there, so... Is there a motion to add this? There was a, it was a motion.
It was a motion.
We got a motion by Commissioner Beauchamp, seconded by Commissioner Allen. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Group eight transfers, non-school, there are three of those, all involving payroll.
All right. We've got a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Is there any discussion on these motions? All right. Seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Motion carries.
Okay. And group nine miscellaneous, Section A, there were three grant applications from the drug court, juvenile, and Norse library, and there was a motion to approve all three.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Smallridge, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And those were just applications, correct?
Yes, pre-applications, yes. Section B, discussion on privatizing the animal shelter operation. A workshop was requested, and there was a motion for the workshop.
I think we want to take that up.
Yes, operations.
Operations.
Sure. And then the property assessor reappraisal, Eagleview and Deckard, no action was taken on that. We did pass the Eagleview tonight, though. Section D, the fiscal year 25, 26 proposed budget, there was no action taken, but we did schedule another budget meeting in April, the 24th, I believe, on a Thursday at 4:00. Under new business, the opioid project recommendations. There was a motion to approve those.
All right. We have a motion to, we got a motion by Commissioner Isbell, seconded by Commissioner Allen, to approve the, and this is appropriating the funds and...
This is the, after the ranking, according to the committee, this was to approve the appropriations.
All right. Is there any discussion on this motion?
I think this is also under the opioid committee report, which is later in this meeting.
Okay, we'll talk.
We can pick it up now, or we can pick it up later, whichever one.
What, what was your action?
Just to approve that.
Okay. We can do it now, and you all did, again, a phenomenal job on this.
I agree.
Unbelievable job. All right. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right. Seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Motion carries.
Okay. Under new business, item two, the circuit and criminal court tech updates, there was a motion to approve that, $69,049 out of the 171 code by the budget committee.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion on the motion? All right. Seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Motion carries.
That's all I have.
All right. Robbie, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You, too. Dr. Parrott.
Thank you, Chairman Mays. I hope you got a chance to read the report, and I did send you some other documentation on what Commissioner Allen had asked. Just a couple of extra things. If you saw a Clinton High School student, Keaton Cook, he was one of only 15 out of 1,600, and he was awarded the Haslam Leadership Scholarship at UT, which is a pretty big deal, first one in our county to do that. And that is tremendous. And then, we've got two schools that are in the final stages of being STEM certified, that is Claxton Elementary School and Norwood Elementary School. Clinton High School is already STEM certified, and they have their, next week, they have their site visit, so we're excited about that. So concession stands done.
Looks good.
And thanks to Tim Isbell, Commissioner Isbell, he's over everybody every Saturday working on something, so he's doing a great job. Really appreciate your help on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's an honor.
All right. Commissioner Yeager, you're recognized.
Thank you. I was driving by the new church school.
Yes.
And the church name, the church name is still on the, on the sign.
Yeah.
And I thought maybe you could put it, Coming Soon Claxton Elementary School, or something like that, but that, I just noticed that the church name is still on that.
Yeah, I had noticed that.
Yeah, okay.
We plan on having the groundbreaking by April, April 2nd as a groundbreaking.
Okay.
So I'll send out invitations to everybody.
All right. Go ahead, Commissioner Allen, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you for the report. I really appreciate that. I read every bit of it, and I made some comments on here. I want to keep those comments, and I want to finally sit down and talk with you about some things. So I'll be calling you now that I have something to work with that we can probably, you know, look at together, and I appreciate you getting back to me.
How to work?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Anything else for Dr. Parrott? Seeing none.
Give us a break early tonight. Thank you.
So Rachel, you're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Brooks.
I'm not going to hold up the progress. We don't have any action on this month. This is basically the same report we submitted to operations, just supplemented with what went on in the last week.
The MOU for Pellicippi, you don't need our action on it. The MOU for, just kidding, yeah. Sorry for holding up progress. All right. Is there any questions for Mr. Brooks? All right. Seeing none, operations committee report, Chairman Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, under property assessor, Commissioner Anderson made a motion to support the Deckard Technologies, seconded by Commissioner Wondell, motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Is there any, okay, Commissioner Palmer, you're recognized.
I just have a question, maybe a procedural question. That, from budget committee, I believe, the finance director said that that would go through purchasing, that that contract needed to go through purchasing. So by us voting for this now, are we approving that, or are we just, I don't understand the purpose of the motion, I guess.
Commissioner Isbell.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I think what it was is, you know, we had extensive conversation about it, and the reason why we thought that we would try to go on to full commission, and I understand, and probably take 12, because it hadn't come from budget if we vote on this, is because we didn't want to leave money on the table when he goes to use it, because he'd either have to hire two more people or this right here, you know, help him do, it'll pay for itself, that's why it come out of the meeting, excellent return on investment.
Gotcha. Commissioner Foster.
So I thought we were just endorsing it, that in operations, not taking action on because it was going through budget. So I thought that was my understanding, that y'all can correct me, I thought we were just endorsing the project to go back through budget, that proper procedure. Is that what I was going to say?
Okay. Before I get to you, Commissioner, if you don't mind, Commissioner Yeager, you're a second on this motion, but you sound like you're conflicted on the motion. Is your motion to approve this as a contract?
Well, I guess it needs to go through purchasing. When we were having the discussion in operations, it sounded like there was a time sensitivity issue where they've got to send out their, the reappraisals, and then the adjustments on the, from the 25 to the 40% rate. So if we waited a month, we might end up having to wait till next year to collect on something. So there was, that was kind of the...
Gotcha.
Is it all right if I answer your question?
Commissioner Yeager.
My intention was just to support. It was not to fund, support the agreement.
Okay.
Like Commissioner Foster said.
Before I come back to you, your motion is to...
Well, we, if we want to keep it clean, I mean, I can, I can just, yeah, just support, endorse it, and if somebody wants...
It's up to you. I mean, there may be a second for your motion.
If somebody wants to amend it to...
But I just wanted to be clear, I want to make sure we're clear on what we're voting on here. So your motion is what?
We endorse the...
You endorse the project?
Project.
Okay. Commissioner Palmer, if you don't mind, I'm going to skip you, go to Commissioner McCamey, I'll come back to you.
What's the monetary issue by budget? I told you it was one of those items that was under the cap.
5,000. It was 5,000 is the ask, and he didn't have, and I think he may be out in the hallway. He just stepped out for a minute.
Yeah, in my recollection, Commissioner McCamey is, Robbie had asked Johnny if we could, if it was time to go through the process, the budget, purchasing, all that, and Johnny indicated yes. But again, I mean, that was prior to operations, so operations, things could have changed, so I don't want to say that's what his intent is now.
But if it's less than 25,000, you're going to have to go purchasing, but it...
Robbie described it as, because it's crossing fiscal years, since the contract would be crossing over to, yeah. And Robbie, of course, Madam Mayor, I'll come back to you, I promise.
That's fine.
I was just consulting with the law director, and he might have some advice here, but if the commission endorses the idea, I think it would, I'll leave it to him to advise there.
Yeah, I think it would be, you know, you get your two-thirds vote, 12 or whatever, it would be okay. I think, I believe his cutoff is April 1st.
Oh, well, that changes the game.
Yeah. I don't, I believe I've heard that.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Palmer.
Okay. What you said, I think everyone said everything that I was going to. He indicated that it could come through budget next month at the budget committee meeting, so I've not heard the April 1st. We did not have the contract go through, you know, purchasing, but he mentioned it.
And I don't want to belabor this, but I, and I hate Robbie's not here, but with it not being a multi-year agreement, I can't find any word that says you've got to have committee or commission approval on anything that crosses fiscal year, especially if it's under the set amount of what we established for a contract. But, yeah, I don't want to speak out of turn and cause anything to happen, but I don't see the issue of having us vote on this tonight if he had, especially if he has, he's got an April 1st deadline, then we're all here. What do you think, Mr. Brooks?
I'm sorry, I was, I was speaking with my deputy.
So you think it's an April 1st deadline?
I think it is. I'm not going to say set in stone, but I thought that was sort of the impetus behind his request. He may have left, or he may still be out in the hallway.
Gotcha. And I would say, too, with it being such a nominal amount, there's probably other things, I mean, this is a formality in terms of approving this, but Commissioner Isbell, I'll go to you.
Okay. And I've spoken to property assessor a couple of times on the phone and in person, and I think Commissioner McCamey asked him about, you know, it's $5,000, but he don't have it in his budget, nowhere. I mean, he could have bought it, you know, because it's under the threshold, but he don't have $5,000. So that's what he's asking us, somewhere to come up with it, and I think, you know, he gave good evidence, you know, that would be a return on investment. And then he did say that if we don't do it by April 1st, then, you know, we'll just leave money basically laying on the table.
Commissioner Vow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going by memory, and that's a dangerous thing, but seemed like Johnny was worried about the time limit as far as getting in line with the other counties that were trying to hurry up and get this project as well. with the other counties that were trying to hurry up and get this project as well, to get this access as well. I think that was one of the key things. I don't know if it was more financial as it was, he wanted to hurry up and have a dedicated answer so that he could tell them.
Well, your scary memory has now helped several of us.
That's even more scary.
So, all right.
Somebody tell me why.
Commissioner Palmer.
Just funding source, where's it coming from?
Okay. Commissioner McCamey, you're good.
Yeah, well, I agree. Just, we, we need to identify where we're taking money from.
All right. And I'll go to Commissioner Allen before I come back to you. Commissioner Allen, I'll go ahead and recognize you first.
I just want clarity on the motion. If not clear at all...
Yeah, I'm about, that's exactly where I'm about to go next. Johnny, you're on the hot spot. You're in the hot seat.
James, everybody.
Motion for Deckard Technologies. Are you seeking for approval for funding now, or are you just looking for, what is...
Funding now, yes, for the Deckards.
Okay.
Not, not the Eaglebee.
All right. What changed from budget to operations in terms of the timeframe? Just so we're...
Well, I think there was a question, is the term of the contract, it's a, it's a one-year, it's an annual contract, can be canceled by either party with, I think it's 90 days' notice.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but Robbie apparently is watching and just text. He said, "I'm doing a BA for Deckard next month," and the contract crossed fiscal years and has to go to Budget Committee.
That's what he'd informed me.
Does that put you behind at all?
I'll just have to handwrite notices, but that's 180 probably, 160, 180. I don't know how many properties it's, that system's going to find, but I can, I can get through it.
All right. Commissioner Anderson, I want to come back to you just to be very clear. Your motion is to...
Uh, just to endorse this, I guess.
Not, you're not asking for a funding source?
Yeah, if, if Robbie says we need to go back to Budget Committee, then I don't want to circumvent that.
All right. Commissioner Jaeger, is that your...
I'll stick with my say.
All right. Commissioner McCamey.
I think we all agree that it's going to go to budget, and they're going to approve $5,000. Uh, I don't know why we couldn't just vote on it tonight, and that, that frees him up to do what he needs to do between now and next one.
Is that an amendment to the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to amend it, go ahead and approve the $5,000.
All right, coming from, this would have to come out of undesignated fund at this point.
Undesignated fund balance.
All right. So we have an amendment to the motion, that this would be funded tonight, approved tonight, uh, coming from the undesignated fund balance. Is there a second on his amendment?
Second.
All right, we have a second, uh, second, Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none. All in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Motion carries. Now, the original motion has been changed to the new motion of approval with the, uh, funding source being undesignated fund balance. They should already have a motion and a second on there. So we have a motion and a second for this project. Commissioner Jaeger is the second. Is there any discussion now on the new motion, the amended motion? Seeing none, go to the board and vote. Motion carries. You're good to go now.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You don't have to come back.
(laughing) All right. Chairman Is...
Under Mayor's report, Commissioner Jaeger made a motion to authorize Anderson County to agree to alter the geographic response area provision of ambulance service within the city of Oak Ridge and execution of necessary paperwork for such acknowledgement and agreement associated with the resolution passed by the city of Oak Ridge, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Motion passed unanimous, forward to full commission with the recommendation for approval.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioner Wondell made a motion for Anderson County to become a coalition partner with Pellicippi Blue Whites contingent on the Law Director's approval, seconded by Commissioner Anderson. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Motion made by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion on this motion? Madam Mayor.
We do have law director approval.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Is there any other discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Commissioner Jaeger made a motion to repeal the adoption of 2018 International Building Codes and adopt 2024 International Building Codes with amendments, seconded by Commissioner Capshaw. Motion passed unanimous, forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Commissioner Chair, Vice Chair Vandergriff.
I did have a question about this. So, as you know, we have, uh, a development going on on Mountain Road in Andersonville, and I just want to make sure that this is not going to change the minimum lot size discussion that we had at Planning Commission last week.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Vandergriff, it does not, uh, the development you're speaking of has been granted a special exception as a planned unit development, subject to Planning Commission approval, which they, it has not come before Planning Commission. But it, this upgrade to the 2024 Building Code does not affect that.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Seeing no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just was going to just notify the full board that this just initiates the process. So what happens now is that these changes will be on file in the clerk's office for 90 days, and then it will come back to you in the form of a resolution. So this is just getting everything started.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Sorry for not...
That was it.
Yeah, he didn't hit me hard enough.
Commissioner Wondell made a motion to have a letter from the Request for a Regional Fire Academy sent to Fire Commission, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we have a, we have a motion and a second. We have a motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Capshaw. Any discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under General Sessions Two Private Act, Commissioner McCamey made a motion to have a workshop considering General Sessions Two, seconded by Commissioner Wondell. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Vow. Commissioner Bochamp, you are recognized.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Isbell, I was watching the operations meeting at that time, and it kind of went back and forth to mix it in with the animal shelter, and then it got taken out, and then Commissioner McCamey wanted to talk about it. Um, I know I had talked to several of the city council members, along with the city mayor in Oak Ridge and the city manager, and them not paying was from a contract that was not renewed in 2023. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Brooks?
No, that is correct.
Okay, and so we never renewed that contract with them, for them to pay that 30,000. Um, I don't see where we can hold the city liable for our mistake. That's our fault. Law Director at the time should have caught that and should have brought it back before this committee for us to vote on. Um, so I don't want to hold the city of Oak Ridge accountable or, and say that you didn't do something when they weren't obligated to do it. Um, at this time, I know we're going to move down. I don't want to overshadow the workshop that we need to do on that animal shelter. Uh, right now, we're under a private act for the Division Two Court, for the judge. At this time, if we decided to abolish the Division Two Court, where are we going to put the judge? So I think we've got a little time to talk about a workshop for Division Two at this time. Um, I don't think it's an urgent need. I do think that we need to get the contract updated. If we're going to hold Oak Ridge and say that they're not paying, then we need to get a contract to them so they can start paying, and, you know, not accuse them of wrongdoing when nothing's been wrong. So, not going to vote on a workshop tonight, because I think we got more things to talk about. Um, and I think we need to get with the city of Oak Ridge. I think you had made the motion for Mr. Brooks to negotiate that with them, but I'm, I'm, I'm not going to support that tonight.
All right. Commissioner McCamey.
Well, in defense of my motion, uh, I agree with everything that Commissioner Bochamp says, and I don't hold Oak Ridge responsible for not renewing the contract. That was, that was our fault, and I'm not asking them to go back and pay since '23, uh, either. But I do think we need to, to have a workshop to see if there's something that we can work out with the city of Oak Ridge, uh, going forward. I mean, the private act says that they shall provide all the information, I mean, that I gave you all, the Operations Committee, you know, it's costing Anderson County $770,000 a year, and that doesn't count the transportation from the prisoners at the jail back down there to that court. But I think we formed a Justice Center Committee, and I would like to actually have them and the General Sessions Two in the workshop. Uh, and, you know, this, this is something long-range. I'm not asking for a workshop to say, "Okay, you've got to do this today." You know, this is some long-range stuff, but at $700,000 a year, it wouldn't take long to pay for a Justice Center. And I, you know, I asked for that back in 2014, and got voted down, you know. Uh, now it costs us probably three times as much as it would have in 2014 when we talked about Justice Center, but...
Probably $11 million, then.
Yeah, but it's cost us 35 million now, probably, so. But, uh, I, I would like to, you know, this way, we can have the judge there, we can have city representatives, just a workshop to look at this and see, you know, if it's something we need, if we can, you know, move the, out of that building and down there and sell it, or whatever. I mean, this, I, I just think we need a workshop to sit down and look at it, look at the private act, what it calls for, because it's, uh, it's costing Anderson County a lot of money. And I, I supported it all along, but it was two main reasons when they asked us to agree to that private act, and that was bad checks and Oak Ridge police officers having to come up here and sit all day, and the merchants having to come up here. Well, that, that doesn't, it's, it's not needed this day and time. There's no such thing as bad checks anymore. Uh, so, you know, the merchants are, are not going to have to come up here and sit all day to collect the $25 of that check. So, but that was, that was the two reasons, was the merchants having to come up here and the police department having to transport the people up here and back and forth.
Gotcha. Commissioner Vandergriff, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Robert said a lot of what I was going to say. Also, just so a lot of the commissioners are aware, uh, it isn't like there hasn't been discussions on this issue over the last few years. There have been verbal conversations, I know of for a fact, between members of this board and the Oak Ridge mayor, and maybe some Oak Ridge councilmen about, "We need to finally sit down and discuss this issue." So to Commissioner Bochamp's point, uh, I think a workshop is a good opportunity to finally sit down and start those discussions, and I think it's been going on, I think you said 2014. I know I've been aware of it since 2016, uh, and had a few conversations with them myself since 2020, at least. So it's not that we've been totally ignoring, uh, the issue. We've been trying to get together with them to sit down and have a conversation. I think maybe, according to what I've heard from the Law Director's office, maybe we're close to doing that, so I'm, I'm going to be in support of this.
And that is something, Commissioner Bochamp, that was ongoing between Mr. Jaeger and Ms. Rackard. They could just never come to an agreement. In fact, there is an MOU that was prepared by the Law Director's Office that, uh, was rejected by the city. So it's, we're not, we won't be starting from scratch.
Uh, Commissioner Small rig, you're recognized.
Yeah, I think before I could support this motion is, I'd like some more information about the breakdown of cost and so on. I, I may have missed that. Um, I'm sure it's, but I, I'd like a precise breakdown of how we arrived at 770,000 before I, I could support this motion.
All right. So we've got a motion and a second for the workshop, and this would be in conjunction with the Justice Center, what's the name of that committee? Is it the Justice Center Committee?
Justice Center Magistrate Committee.
Oh, okay. Um, working together on that, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I've got a list right down here for this year's budget, if that's what Commissioner Small rig is referring to.
Mm-hmm.
I got an email from Robbie, and, uh, I think he said it was the same one that he had sent to Commissioner Vow. Uh, I know the one thing that stood out to me was, okay, budget for 101-533310, judge and assistant salary and benefits, $367,242. Cleaning, $7,896. Utilities, $53,491. For circuit court employees, $225,891. IT, $20,000. Copier, $1,632. Security from the sheriff's office, 101, 371, and that does not include transportation. That's everything but transportation.
All right.
Total of $770,000.
Go ahead, Christopher.
Yeah, I, I think that's assuming that all those costs can be eliminated.
No. No, that's...
I think that this is probably, instead of kind of litigating this, this might be discussed in the workshop or in a judge's judicial, or a Justice Center Committee meeting in terms of, you know, the back and forth or the discussion on the justification of costs, because I don't know if we're, or what can be eliminated out. I don't think we're ready for that tonight. Commissioner Jaeger.
So is this motion to have a workshop with full commission or with that committee?
I think full commission.
Okay, thank you.
And then the, uh, Justice Center Committee, made up of judges and commissioners, so that would, you know, they would be there.
All right. We have a motion and a second for a workshop. Would you, uh, with this stemming from operations, Chairman Isbell, would you be coordinating this to try to get some dates together? Is that what the, or do y'all want to do that tonight? To get a date for this?
That was Commissioner McCamey's request, and then we got another follow-up after this one, that Commissioner Jaeger has got some more information. We can send it back to Operations.
Come up with a date. Are you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Operations Committee will decide the, the date for the workshop. Um, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Raise your hand, please. Uh, yes, votes, raise your hand. Motion carries. It's not...
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Jaeger made a motion for the Law Director to continue communicating with the city of Oak Ridge Law Director, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Uh, Commissioner Jaeger, do you have any information you wanted to...
No, I just, uh, I believe that we may as well get a dialogue started to see if, that was my, that was my intention.
And that's already going, is that, has started...
Yes, there's been some preliminary discussion with Ms. Rackard.
Gotcha. Commissioner, was that your...
That's all I needed, and I thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Uh, Commissioner Isbell, you're recognized, sir.
One other thing is... One other thing is, because I didn't know about the MOU, and I don't think Commissioner Jaeger knew about it either, we probably took it up in operations committee, so maybe next month we can have that, so we can, but I'd, I'd leave that up to Commissioner Jaeger if he wanted to have that for discussion.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion for the law director to continue communicating with the city of Oak Ridge. And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Water in Bresel New River area, Commissioner Wondell made a motion to pursue the WIN small underserved disadvantaged communities grant to take care of the water up on the mountains, seconded by Commissioner Capshaw. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Capshaw. Is there any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Wondell, you recognize, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my question would be, who's going to spearhead this to carry it through?
All right. Commissioner Allen, you're the motion maker.
You can spearhead it.
Why not? That was easy.
Let's just go through, uh, thank you. You said we go through operations, Mr. Chairman, that's fine. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Val?
Every man, every woman, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner McCamey?
Don't we have a grant personally?
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was going to say, I mean, we can work on that with John Prince. I already downloaded the information about the grant. I believe Commissioner Wondell said, Representative Scarborough said it'd be released in May. There is a webinar, and I was going to talk to John about that. One of the things we need is just even at the very beginning is a definition of if that area does apply, because it mentions communities unserved or underserved communities, and the, the definition was a political subdivision, so we just need to, for starters, before we get too far out, like make sure that it isn't eligible because it's unincorporated.
So, Mr. Prince will be digging into that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on that and make sure that we're following all the timelines and everything that needs to be done on that.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the resolution recognized volunteer firefighters has been moved to, do all three at the same time. ACWA discussion, Commissioner Wondell most, made a motion to keep the ACWA discussion as an item on operations agenda with the minutes going forward, seconded by Commissioner Capshaw. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Capshaw, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next was animal shelter workshop. Commissioner McCamey made a motion to recommend a full commission schedule workshop, seconded by Commissioner Wondell. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion, recommend full commission of a workshop. Is there, we have a motion by Commissioner Capshaw, seconded by Commissioner Varan. And I, I will say, in budget, Chair, Chairman Vow, I believe it was you, Chairman Vow, that asked the mayor to come up with some ideas, and I know that I had sent out the email, and I'm happy to work with the mayor on that as we get ready for the workshop. But if anybody, I mean, as the, we're gonna have the email, but Commissioner Bochamp, you are recognized, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In budget, this came up also, and I had made the recommendation that operations, basically, let's just, just say it, that they'll come up with the agenda on this, they'll decide what we're going to talk about. I made it very clear, I didn't want to rehash the same things, we needed to have a plan. Do we want to privatize it? Do we want to make it bigger? How, how do we see the future of the animal, animal shelter? Do we want to abolish it? Do we want to send it back to Oak Ridge? Those are things that we needed to come up with, so we would have an agenda. I'm a firm believer, we need an agenda, we need a guide to help us. We've got citizens that are out here that keep coming to us wanting things, but we're not getting anywhere. I watched operations that night, 16 minutes was the total discussion, and 14 of that was Commissioner Wondell talking about this, of what is going to, what does this workshop look like? I'm just as confused today as I was before it even started. We can't keep having workshops. Operations has got to do the work. They're, they're to review all of the overall policies, they're to oversee, they're to guide, and then it's to come before this committee. So, now we're going to have a workshop on Division Two, we're going to have a workshop on the animal shelter. I'm fine with that. I, I want to do what's best for the animal shelter. But the citizens are only seeing what we're doing up here. They don't see behind the scenes. They don't see that there is political stuff that goes on, and that's not calling out anybody, but there is. And everybody knows I shoot it straight up here. I'm not going to be a political pawn. I want to do what's right for the citizens, I want to do what's right for the animals. For anybody to sit and send me an email or a commissioner to say, I don't care about animals, that is the craziest thing in the world. I got a picture right here, tell this guy right here that I don't love him. I mean, that's just the way it is, and I'm going to do whatever it takes for the best interest of this county. But to sit here, for me to sit here and openly and honestly tell the citizens, yes, I want to do the best thing, but I've got some people that are playing me at the same time, is a little hard to do. Now, I'm not going to out this person, and I didn't even watch the full operations committee until this afternoon before I walked in this meeting, because I thought that one little part was what it was, because it was on the agenda. I didn't even know that the mayor had unfinished business that she brought up, but she did bring it up, and she did say that this was political. She's telling you the truth. Now, that person, it's not my job to out them tonight, I'm not going to out them. They can out themselves if they want to. But don't suggest I go sit at, go on a tour with the animal shelter when you know good and well that I've been to the animal shelter. That's another political game that I'm not going to be a part of. I want to do what's best, and I, I've said it many times as we sit up here, we're a team. And I hope we can continue to act as a team and do what's best for the animals, not, not for the citizens, for the animals. What are we going to do for the animals? I would have loved for an agenda to come out of this, so I guess we're going to go blindly into this, basically starting from day one, because we have no guidance of what we're going to do. Now, if anybody's willing to send it back to operations and let's get an agenda, so we can tell the citizens what we're going to work on. I, I think they're due that. I think they keep, they keep coming to this podium, and we owe that to them. But I'm not going to sit up here and be a political pawn anymore, and I will out it from this day forward. I hope we move forward.
All right. I yield my time to my Sheriff Van De Grift.
Yeah, her request to speak button is not.
Yeah, I don't have a request to speak button, so.
But, we're good.
So.
Go ahead.
I just kind of wanted to echo a, a lot of what Commissioner Bochamp said. I, I have had a really rough month. There has been a lot of things that were said about me personally. My, my family has been tagged in Facebook posts, my mother has been stopped in the Walmart. People have called my mother-in-law, and I didn't really appreciate that. When I signed up to be the county commissioner, I did sign up to do the best that I could, and I knew that you're not always going to be able to please everyone, but to kind of go on attack of my family is completely uncalled for, and my family did not sign up for that. So, with that said, I also am extremely disappointed in the operations committee, because I felt like that if this, this, this is a, a issue that is very passionate, people are very passionate about it, and it's an issue that I would like to do something about. I don't have a, a request to speak button, not that that is an excuse, I could have thrown my hand up and said I wanted to talk about it, but is this really, is it really an issue? And I think it is, and I think that we as county commission need to roll up our sleeves and do something about it. Or are we playing political games by pushing a request for a workshop, kicking the can down the road? So, are we going to do something about it? Are we just going to play political games? Because I'm not doing that anymore. I will not be bullied by anybody on this commission, and I'm not going to be bullied by the public anymore about it. I want to do the right things for the, for the animals. So, are we going to have a workshop or are we not?
Commissioner Isbell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The request that came out of budget was for us to vote on having a workshop, and that's what we did. We had extensive talk about it, and even the ones that went out there and talked about us, you know, and, and shamed us, came back and said, we appreciate what you did about the discussion, and we're going to have a workshop. Now, if you, you know, operations, I'm sure don't have a problem. I mean, we did the request from what come from budget. We don't have a problem at all setting up an agenda. I don't. But that's what this vote was about, was, it was, it was for the full, to operations to approve the same thing that budget did, to have a workshop. So, that's what we did. I don't think anybody in operations laid down on their job. We did exactly what the request was that came from budget, and we'll take care of it. I mean, if you want to have a vote on that right now, I'm sure that the members of operations committee will take full lead on it. Is that correct, members of operations committee?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Anderson?
What's kind of the normal procedure? We've had several strategic planning workshops, so we get an agenda for that, but I don't think it's been sent to operations committee, so I mean, I'm, I'm fine if we want to delegate it to somebody to, I mean, I'm just saying it's.
It went all through operations, the strategic planning did.
I know, I know we talked about it on there, but as far as like setting an agenda of what, what's on the table, my impression was, if we have a workshop, we're kind of putting all the options on the table, privatization, hybrid, leave it, leave it alone, get rid of it. So, I thought it was more going to be in a, kind of an open-ended thing, but, you know, I'm, I'm fine with.
Commissioner Capshaw?
Setting a date.
Okay. I know I'm the newbie. That can only last for so long for me saying that. But my impression of us having a workshop is that we sit down and we have, like, if it has to be breakout sessions, that we're going to sit down and cover everything concerning the animal shelter and come up with real resolutions moving forward. That was just my impression, and that's what I thought that we were voting on, and that's what I'm hoping we accomplish in the workshop, and I just wanted to state that. Now, if y'all want an agenda, if that's what we need to, you want a full-out written-out agenda, this is what the topics we're going to hit, I don't care for it to come back to operations, and we do that. I just thought moving, that was my impression of, we're covering everything there and we're knocking it out. And that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Jaeger?
It's my understanding in their open meetings that an agenda is required for a work session.
Yeah, so.
There's no free-flowing work sessions.
Yes, sir. So, I would, and this is hesitant to even hand this over, I don't think it's necessary. So, when the email came out and the, the intent, and Chairman Vow kind of alluded to this during budget, asked the mayor for, would she be willing to work on getting information in terms of private, you know, privatizing, or we've thrown around hybrids or, or whatever. So, what I intended out of this is that if the commission was okay with this, is that I would work with the mayor, come up with an agenda, then schedule the workshop to have this and discuss, because I am under the school of thought that Dr. Smallridge was in budget, is that if we put a lot out there, I feel like that we're just going to skim the surface on everything. But my focus, and albeit maybe narrow, was I wanted to, for full transparency, I didn't really want to talk about anything else other than, we either, is privatizing the animal shelter the best for Anderson County, or is it not? It's either yes or no. That's what I envisioned when I sent the email out to the body, is that's what I wanted the discussion to be, because I think if we, if we go in with a broad focus, we are going to sit there and rehash what's happened, and I will tell you, like I said in budget, I'll gavel it closed and I'll go play ball with my son. I think we need to have a narrow focus, and I would, I would ask for the freedom, and if somebody else needs to do it, that's fine, but that I would work with the mayor and kind of say, here's what the agenda looks like. And, and what that could be is what privatizing looks like in general, here are the counties that do it, here's the pros and cons to those, here is what the financials of a privatization looks like, and then we start from there and move forward. This definitely going to happen in a meeting, but I feel like that would be the path, because just like the Justice Center, we talked about the Justice Center, they ended up remodeling 12 million courts. You know, let's, can we just narrow focus this and then come as the body and say, yeah, privatized, you know, privatizing is the best thing for this county. Do we do it? Or no, it's not. Then we don't do it, and then we keep going down the road. So, I feel like that was my focus when I sent the email out. That's what I would ask for permission from you guys, if it's okay to do that. But the motion is to have a workshop, and I would ask that we, I work with the mayor and we get ready for that, if that's okay.
So, that's your motion?
It's not my motion, but that was my, my intent behind the request when I emailed the body, and whenever I spoke at budget was for that, for the mayor and I to work together on this, and then create an agenda and a date.
I'll amend that, leave that to be the motion, I like that amendment.
All right, we have a, an amendment to the motion unless the, are you okay with that? So, there, I mean, there's no need for amendment.
No, first amendment.
Commissioner Varan? Okay. Is there any discussion on, on this motion?
The amendment?
Well, Commissioner Capshaw has, is okay with, with the direction. Commissioner Father, Foster has withdrew his amendment.
And so the motion on the floor is to have a workshop?
Is to have a workshop, and that the mayor and I will work together on an agenda and set a date.
And the agenda would be to?
Focus on private outsourcing. I can never say that word, so I'm just going to say outsourcing. Commissioner Wondell, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly will not try to take up 14 minutes tonight. You know, I certainly can have a workshop, but I fear that a workshop will end up, no matter who's working on it, the same way it's been for the last, as one of the speakers said earlier, 40 years. This is a in-depth issue that is personal for many. It comes across sometimes of being attacked, and I would like to thank and I apologize, Commissioner Vandergriff or Commissioner Bochamp, or any of you commissioners that feel that you've been attacked. At some point in life as commissioner, you're going to be attacked. I've been attacked right outside that door one time, cast a vote for apparently the wrong person on the juvenile judge's side, and I heard it all the way down into my car, and please follow me, and all that kind of fun stuff, but those same people are my friends now. So, I just would encourage you to, don't let it get to you. I appreciate each and every one of you that serve, and I thank anybody out there that does too. So, Mr. Chairman, I would just say that we, we went through that workshop process, I think we had 12 meetings through the Animal Care Advisory Committee that was ultimately shut down because we weren't achieving anything, but the last thing we did achieve was that resolution, and that resolution was to develop that committee. And I certainly am open, and I think anybody here is open to any one massage, I think the quickest fix is to take that resolution and change it to whatever makes you feel good, remove the word advisory, add 10 people for the mayor, or whatever it is, to, to make you all feel good, and just take that piece of work that's been done over the last, really, 20-plus. over the last really 20-plus years, but mayor did work on it. We had a healthy discussion. I don't think she's mad at me. I'm not mad at her. She brought up some good things in our operations meeting. So I think if we could just take that document, and many of you are probably thinking, well, this is Tracy's way to try to pass that resolution again. No, it's Tracy's way to try to get a committee together to find out what is the best solution. That committee would be the committee, the people made up of volunteers, the mayor will run it, mayor's got to be involved. She runs it now. No one's saying that should change. No one's ever said that. I mean, maybe they have in passing, but it didn't say it in the resolution. So I would just offer that up as, maybe that would be the start of the meeting workshop, is to design it the way you feel comfortable, put your two cents in or 20 cents in and change it the way you like to see it. I'll support whatever you come up with because something is better than nothing, and that's where we're at, is nothing. And it's not fair to the people we employ at the animal shelter to put them in that situation. They do not have the tools or the resources they need to perform effectively. And, and what happens is, is we find ourselves arguing, you know, what, did you get the cameras put up? Well, how much money did you spend? And that's not productive for any of us. So I'm gonna support whatever this body wants. I was curious to see how this workshop would go, if that's what the desire is of this body for the Operations Committee to take it. My, my two cents, Mr. Chairman, will be we reevaluate that resolution and, and I'll ask for our fellow commissioners who were uncomfortable with it to provide the feedback to the Operations Committee on how they would like that resolution to read and that committee to be designed. So, and I appreciate the time and hopefully it was only about four or five minutes.
Commissioner Isbell.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And one thing that came out of Operations Committee is we promised the public that we would work on a solution. And that's what the Operations Committee will do. Agreed?
Nope.
Okay.
Commissioner Jaeger. This is the last, we're gonna beat on this motion.
You can, you can get the vote if you want.
No, go ahead.
All right. This is a big deal to me. This is four, five, six million dollars. This is an expanded operation as far as employees. I think everybody should understand everything about it. And I don't think it can be done in a committee basis where there's Robert's Rules and no real conversation has to be. And I think a workshop is the only way that we can understand the scope of what is being proposed. I haven't seen an operational estimate or, really, I don't know if I've seen a final drawing. So I, I think it's a big enough deal that a workshop is, is a good idea.
All right. All right, so we've got a motion by Commissioner Capshaw, seconded by Commissioner Varren for workshop. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Next, under open business, Commissioner Wondell made a motion for the Comptroller's Report of December 6, 2022, and the Operational Report of December 12, 2022, and Minutes. Commissioner Wondell added to include the HR and Law Director's report to the Minutes, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Motion passed for, to full commission for approval.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Is there any discussion on the motion? Chairman Isbell.
Just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, I didn't know that this was gonna come up under open business, so I wouldn't want anybody to think that I was being a political pawn or anything like that, but it was all new to me.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under new business, Commissioner Wondell made a motion requesting a resolution for the month of March as adopted PEP month, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Motion passed for full commission for approval.
I think we had, we took that.
We took that under, under all three.
All right.
That concludes Operations Committee report.
Thank you, sir. Rules Committee, Commissioner Smallridge.
Yeah, we have no action items to bring to commission. We are continuing to work with the law director on some legal questions regarding the wearing of political signage and attire, so, but no action items to bring.
All right, thank you, sir. Fire Commission, Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think we had any action items either. I just would like to thank all of those that came out to the Met for Chili Supper. I think it was a good event. Appreciate everybody that supports the volunteer fire departments and also appreciate everybody passing this resolution number 23-03-1207. We read earlier in the public meeting for honoring the volunteer firefighters of Anderson County. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. I heard there was a Conway Twitty sighting.
I heard that too.
All right, Chairman Isbell.
Well, that's what I wanted to speak about is, is Commissioner Vowell, I've heard the, you know, the National Anthem many times, and the only one I've ever heard, and I've told everybody this, is Whitney Houston. So I got Commissioner Vowell seconding on that.
Do you prefer Conway Twitty or Harold Jenkins?
I'll speak to you after the next one.
All right, Commissioner Wondell.
For, oh, sorry, I must've hit the wrong button.
Oh, you're good.
I apologize.
No problem. All right, we will move, we've already done opioid committee. Now, library board minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'd like to say, just on the animal stuff, I have been to the animal shelter as well and, you know, fully understand, and I care about animals too. I also care about the children in this county. And I know we're concerned about the management of that department, of the animal shelter department, but I'm concerned about the management of the library as well. And if you look at the budget for the library, it is, it's significant. And we, it is more than the Planning and Zoning Committee, or Department Clerk and Master, more than Registered Deeds, and more than the animal shelter. And so there's a lot of things going on. We did not have communication for a year with the library board. They withheld their minutes.
If I may, just really quick.
Okay.
Ma'am, if, before we kinda get down this rabbit hole, if we get in a rabbit hole, but can we get a motion? I mean, we've, we've got a motion, we've got an action item here. I just wanna make sure that we're discussing something that's pertinent, that-
Okay.
So we've got a motion by Commissioner Bochamp and seconded by Commissioner Vowell to approve the library board minutes.
Okay.
I'll come back to you.
Month's discussion. Can I discuss?
I mean, is it about the library board and the minutes?
And the minutes, yes.
Continue.
We have not had communication for over a year and then we get all of these minutes stepped on us. And I hope that we're paying attention to them. I hope that we read the minutes last month for February. I know that they are, they argued over who would be the treasurer. They're not comfortable with the position. We've got budget coming up. Their budget has not been turned in. There's just some items like that that we need to address as well. And so I would like for us to consider this and look at this department, just like we're looking at the animal shelter and like we're looking at the other departments. We still have people that come to this meeting speaking about library board, or about the library situation. And we also have people that show up at the library board. There's not a resolution there's at either. So I just would like for us to, to be conscientious and to look at that. And I don't know if there should be a workshop on that in the future or not, but if we're gonna start looking at departments, we need to look at all of them that we have issues with.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. My own, well, I too am like Commissioner Palmer. I care about the library and the children a great deal. And I would like for our library minutes to be clear. I did speak with Commissioner Anderson about the clarity. For example, there's some sentences in the minutes that were just very, very vague. And I would like for those to be cleaned up a great deal so that when people go back, they'll know that they're talking about the books in the library and just not something vague. It is important that these minutes are, are clear. And they should be gotten to us in a timely manner. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Vowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I picked what Commissioner Allen was talking about, excuse me, in the minutes, the third paragraph from the bottom is kinda vague. It's, it mentions one member and then it spokes on issues previously brought to the ACI. Is that, that's what Commissioner Allen's, okay. And I will say this, I think the minutes from the library board have improved. I know in the past, we've had a few discussions with them here at full commission about requesting and maybe they get some kind of offered training on, I don't even know what's the name of this, proper minute taking or something. Annette probably is foremost expert on that in the room. But maybe that would help in the future, knowing what needed to be in minutes, what was required of those and more specifics, I think would be of benefit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Anderson.
So I took over on the library board, I guess because I was fairly new and nobody else wanted it. I think that's the reason, I don't think there was an argument over treasurer. I think there was just, it's a citizen-led board that, you know, people get unfairly attacked and nobody necessarily particularly wanted to be treasurer. They were willing to and they, and they are. I'm, I'm not aware that the library directors are behind on getting their budget in. I know they're, they're working on presenting a zero increase budget, which is hard to do because we, we voted to switch the penny amount with EMS and that's created a deficit which is being covered with the, the library fund balance, the reserve balance, which I think is a testament to how fiscally conservative the library board's been over the years. They've got a fund balance. So looking at this paragraph, Chairman Anderson called for a period to hear from the public after the ACL, ACLB business was complete. One member spoke and I think, I think this is just kind of paraphrasing, but probably kinda hard to follow their train of thought. But anyway, that was a member of the public that spoke, not a board member. And it, it was a discussion, no action taken on it, so.
All right. Thanks, sir.
I mean, some people maybe think that's too much information for minutes. Some people think it's not enough. I don't wanna take the minutes, so I'm grateful we have somebody that does.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Bochamp, seconded by Commissioner Vowell to approve the library board minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we will work our way down. Commissioner Vandergriff, you're recognized for an announcement.
Yeah, we don't have anything on the docket. I just had announcement. Mayor Frank has helped us and we, the opioid committee will be having a meeting on April the 25th. Oh, sorry. March the 25th, sorry, little flustered. And we will be recognizing those applications that receive funding through the opioids. So we had $427,000 worth of grants. It will be at 4:30.
4:30. In here?
Yes, in here, at 4:30. Room 312 at 4:30. So I'd really like everybody to come out and, and recognize these groups that are making a difference in the lives of Anderson County. Something really important to me, I think every family, but I was affected greatly by opioid addiction and, and so I'm, I'm excited that, that this is a very positive thing that, that we can focus on and go forward. So I thank you all for allowing me to, to chair that committee and, and thank you for your support.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Any other announcements?
Yeah. You know, this got by me because I'm a little too slow. Under the mayor's report, if you noticed, she had a list of initiatives, things to increase communication about the shelter. I know we don't wanna get into that, but I just wanted to thank her in responding to my request. And I think it's a, it's a good list and I think it would help with communications in the, in the community.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Commissioner Foster.
I would just like to recognize Commissioner Capshaw for her birthday. Wish her a happy birthday. Day late, ladies and gentlemen, a happy birthday. Commissioner Palmer's gonna leave us a happy birthday note.
All right.
You don't want that.
Any other announcements? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?